Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Chamber of Commerce's Nassau County School Board District One Candidate Forum. My name is Sean McGill. I'm a member of the Government Affairs Committee, and I'll be the moderator of our discussion today. This is not our typical question and answer forum, but the candidates are going to discuss the issues, and I am here just to keep things flowing. I'm not going to fact-check. Since this is a school board function, if you say two plus two is five, you might see me make a weird face, but I'm not going to say, "You might want to say four." And the other thing that my job is to do is to keep the timing flowing. So I'd like to start our program discussing the chamber's mission statement. The Nassau County Chamber of Commerce is a membership-based association of Nassau County businesses, professional leaders, and individuals working together to provide leadership which will aggressively promote and defend responsible economic growth, employment opportunities, government, and excellence in education, and quality of life. So a lot of our discussion today will be talking more about the employment opportunities and, of course, excellence in education. We do have a live audience here. They have the ability to write down questions. Feel free to get them to our chamber staff, and we will incorporate those into our discussion as best as possible. I'd like now to introduce our candidates, Mr. Jamie Dionis, Ms. Shannon Hoag, and unfortunately, our third candidate for District One, Mr. Rick Pavlov cannot be here. Before we get started, I absolutely have to thank Meredith Lucas with Visual Impact for our recording and allowing us to share this with our greater audience online. So getting ready to start, I will allow Mr. Jamie Dionis two minutes to introduce yourself to us.
Well, thank you very much, Sean, and thank you to Regina and Meredith and Alex and all the chamber for hosting today's event. I know these take a lot of time, and your efforts have certainly not gone unnoticed. My name's Jamie Dionis, and I am currently serving on the Nassau County School Board. I'm a lifelong resident here of Nassau County. I was born and raised. I was fortunate enough to marry a real pretty girl here from Fernandina, and this year we celebrate our 23rd wedding anniversary. I have two adult children, both graduates of the local public school system. I have a 12-year-old grandson that's currently serving, or serving, attending Fernandina Beach Middle School. I'm a 27-year veteran with the Nassau County Fire Rescue Department, where I serve as a senior engineer and a paramedic, and I'm a big stakeholder here in Nassau County. I've owned, operated a number of small businesses. The reasons I'm running for the Nassau County School Board are real simple. First are our teachers and our support staff. I'm a huge supporter of our teachers and support staff, allowing them to do the great work to keep our district rated as high as it is, giving them the tools and the resources that they need, and being an advocate for them and a voice for them. Second is managing growth. Our county continues to grow, and so does our school system, keeping our classroom sizes small with our education high in each of our classes at each of our schools. And lastly, something that's very near and dear to me is public safety. Ladies and gentlemen, we have very safe schools in Nassau County, and that takes a lot of effort. It's been a privilege working with our chief of police, our safety school specialist, and our guardians and our resource officers, keeping our schools safe. My name is Jamie Dionis, and I am your candidate for the Nassau County School District, District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamie. Ms. Shannon Hoag?
Well, it has been said that all learning is understanding relationships, from writing school-wide curriculum, training teachers, providing students with intensive reading instruction, hosting family events, working ballgames, and sometimes you can walk in and see me actually wiping down the tables of the cafeteria. I know what it takes to serve the schools of Nassau County, and people have asked, "Why? Why are you running?" The kids, they're the number-one reason. I want us to be preparing our students for the real world, not a test world. We have amazing staff. I want us to think creatively in how are we going to retain our veteran teachers? How are we going to attract additional dynamic staff? And as I drive down the streets, I'm seeing all these help-wanted signs. Let's partner with more local businesses to develop shadow programs and internships so that we could have more of our students with our local workforce. We have to set up every kid for success. I'm a mom, three daughters, and I've told them, "You don't have to go to college," but we have to make sure that we're looking at every single child. Let's look at the ones that are wanting to go into the military. Let's expose our students to trade programs as early as sixth grade and college grade, too, the ones that are wanting to go straight into the workforce. Wonderful. That's a win-win situation, but we have to make sure that we're setting up every single child for success. My name is Shannon Hoag, and I am running for the Nassau County School Board, District One.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. This is our warm-up question, and you guys touched on it, but was there one particular event I need to throw my hat in the ring, and I'm going to provide my talents to the school board? And I'll let Ms. Shannon go first on this one.
I'm in the educational system. I recently left my position with MLF Hardy as their reading coach just so I could actually run for the school board seat, just in case I were to win. I didn't want to leave the school hanging. I didn't feel that was the right thing to do. And I see everything that's going on within those four walls, and, you know, whenever you're making decisions and it impacts everybody, from your kindergarten student to the parent, to the cafeteria worker, to your custodial staff, it just makes a difference. And so many times, I'm a safe space, so the people can come to me, and they can talk, they can tell me everything that's going on, and they know it's not repeated. But I could just feel a tug for the last two years. I have felt that feeling of, "Okay, something is coming. You've got to do something. You're going to be moving soon." And I didn't really understand what that feeling was until this year, early in the year. Some teachers and some parents were coming to me and just talking about their frustrations and how they felt like they didn't have a voice. And then I knew it. I want to be that voice. I want to be the champion for our students, families, the staff. And I always say the word "staff" because our teachers are important, but we have so many unsung heroes. Those, I call them power professionals because they are so powerful, and they actually provide instruction to our students. And the cafeteria workers that, you know, are feeding our children every day, those are the people that sometimes don't get noticed, and they definitely don't feel like they have that voice. And I come from factory workers. My mom actually worked in the cafeteria. I want to be that voice, that champion for our kids and for everybody that's involved in the education of our children.
Well, thank you. Mr. Jamie, why don't you catch your off?
Well, thank you for that question, and Sean, I came to the scene in kind of a weird way. I've been a 27-year firefighter. I've always had a very strong role in our local fire union, and I was asked in 2012 to come to a school board meeting to support some teachers that were going through a difficult negotiation session. And born and raised here, graduated from the local school system, I couldn't tell you where the school board met. I had no idea who was on the board. I just knew I had a meeting to attend. That very first meeting was the start of budget for the school district that particular year, and I learned about this new giant development out near I-95 that ultimately became Wildlight, and learned that the Nassau County School District was our largest employer in 2012. I didn't know any of those statistics. And much like everything else, I come from the private sector, and when I get interested in something, I start gathering all the information that I possibly can. And I started attending school board meetings, and right around month six or seven, the question was finally asked, "Are you making a run for school board?" And I had not considered that, and that's as truthful as it gets. As a small business owner, I saw a need for having small business mentality on our board. It was very easy to see even back in those days in 2012, even though we were coming out of a recession, that our county had been discovered, our island had been discovered. People were still moving in despite not great economic times, but you just had a feel that we were well on our way to exploding here in Nassau County. And I felt like my talents and my experience would play well as being a board member. So I ran, and this, just finishing up my second term on the school board.
Great. Well, thank you. Okay, so now that I threw that curveball at you, let's get back on track, and we'll start with Mr. Jamie, kind of what I call our first, you know, major discussion point, our state of the school system. I do know that the state rankings just came out, and Nassau County continues to do very well compared to other state counties. But give me three things that you think we are doing well, and then three things that could use some improvement.
Well, first, thank you for recognizing that we're an A-rated district, but Sean, a lot of people, I think, are just realizing that we're not just an A-rated district, but we're also number two in the state. There are 67 counties here in Nassau County. There are 14 districts that are rated A, and we are one of those 14, and we're only two percentage points behind St. John's County. So a lot of huge high fives and accolades to all of our school teachers and our support staff for that. So number one, the grades tell the story. We are an A-rated district. We're number two in the state. We continue to do a great job educating students and meeting and exceeding the state requirements. Number two is technology. We do a wonderful job in technology. Ms. Chrissy Bass runs our technology department, and she has done a fabulous job, and our technology department was actually put through the test in March of 2020. I remember that day well, March 13th, when we learned that we were going to be extending spring break an additional week. But what the public didn't know is that we were having conversations that we may not be returning to school, and that's a scary thing when you stop and think about it. Chrissy Bass and her team sprung into action because we didn't return to school, and we transformed from brick and mortar to teaching virtually at home. And this was done in just a matter of days, something that we had never done before. Lastly is safety and security at our school districts. When I came on the board eight years ago, we only had resource officers at our middle schools and our high schools. Today, I'm very proud to say that we have resource officers at every one of our campuses. Every time that campus is open and instruction is taking place, we have an armed security guard and/or guardian at each of our campuses. We also have our own police force now. It was started in 2018. Sadly, a lot of the things that we do great, we can also do a much better job at. Teacher and staff recruitment and retention, there are lots of work that needs to be done there. We are going through a lot of challenges, as are a lot of other districts, but we can do a better job. I'm a huge supporter of our teachers and our support staff, and they deserve more. And we've just got a lot of work to do to continue to recruit and retain those great high-quality teachers and dedicated staff. Career and technical. Ms. Tammy Johnson was just elevated to that department. She was the principal at Hilliard Middle Senior School. We've always been a little anemic in that department, but she has already, in just a matter of weeks, done a really good job at identifying new career and technical programs for our school. We offer everything from CNA to HVAC, electrical engineering, small engine repair, digital and media services. Real excited to see what Tammy's going to be bringing to us over the next 12 months. And lastly, supporting and helping our lower-performing students. That's always been a little struggle for us, as I'm sure it is in most districts. We are doing a better job there, but there's certainly room for improvement in that area also.
Thank you. Ms. Shannon, your thoughts on some great things we're doing and some things we could do better?
As far as the great things, I just look at the people who provide the education. We are blessed. Working at MLF Hardy and just with different professional development opportunities across the county, you know, you just kind of stand back sometimes, and you just look around you and you go, "Wow." Like, we are really blessed in Nassau County to have the people that we have on a daily basis, serving our children and our families. That's the number-one thing, in my opinion, are the people who actually serve our kids. And we have some phenomenal students. Let me tell you, they are gifted, they are talented, and sometimes it's not academically. We have kids that are more than just a test score. Yes, yes, we are rated number two in the state. Let's go for number two in the country. Let's not set our standards to Florida, but we have kids who are just gifted musically, artistically, very athletic. So the kids, that's the second thing we've got going for us, was we're truly blessed with the students we have in our county and the programs. We have a lot of programs that we actually offer. My youngest daughter was taking the aerospace class, and of course, it took one class, and she decided that was not for her, but I have several parents who their children are actually learning to fly. They're getting their license, and that is just unthinkable. Whenever, you know, you're looking back at what we were like in, you know, high school, we didn't have those opportunities. Over on the west side, they can actually do the aquaponics. That, we have a lot to offer our kids. And the third thing is we're growing, and that is a concern. I'm going to get to that, but we still have that small-town feel. We still have those small-town values, I like to say, and I want us to hold on to that. And as far as, you know, concerns, everything that we are able to offer these kids is because of the staff. That's the top concern. If we can't hold on to these people, your A-rating that we all like to hold on to, you can go ahead and kiss it goodbye. We're not going to be able to maintain these high standards if we don't even have the staff to provide it. So that's one of my number-one concerns. Another is the growth. I mean, when we moved here 11 years ago, they were already working on the road development, so we could see the growth coming. We have to be proactive. We have got to constantly be thinking and planning ahead, and we can't wait till all of this growth and then go, "Oh, my gosh. What are we going to do? Where are we going to put these kids?" So it's constantly having to plan, and so I'm going to go into what Jamie was saying with the technology, and we do, we have a lot of technology, but what I see our technology being used for is just teaching the kids that gap instruction. We have to have the kids on, for math, for reading, 45 minutes in a pre-K, not, I'm sorry, kindergarten through fifth, we're using Lexia iReady, we use Star, and then also iXL when you get into the middle school grades. But we need to be going beyond that. Those computers, that technology, we need to be creating innovative and creative thinkers. How are they going to use this technology in the real world and not just be using it for, you know, the gap instruction? I'll be honest with you, our students are very tech-savvy, and I feel like if we would give them a little bit more ownership, some project-based learning, we're going to get more, a better return for what we're putting into the classroom. So I feel like technology, we have a lot of technology, but we need to be doing a better job, and how are we actually using the technology within the classroom?
Thank you. Okay, so, and I've got a follow-up for both of you guys, but we'll, just to give you the preview, we're definitely going to talk about staffing and growth in a second. And for our audience, you may not know, because I was involved in the aerospace, the initiation of that aerospace program, our school district actually owns an airplane. And in our county commission forums last week, it was brought up that there seems to be, and I want your guys' take on this, a disparity of access for students between the west side of the county and the east side of the county. Do you agree with that, and how, as school board members, can we fix that? And I'll start with Ms. Shannon.
I agree. I grew up in a town that is similar to Bryceville, and we didn't have the opportunities that the larger area had. So whenever I'm talking to students at different events, they have mentioned that, and they've talked about how, even with the career center, how they would like to do a lot of those careers, but now that there is a seventh period, they're wondering, you know, "How can we get out there to the career center, take a class, and get back in time?" And they're concerned. They're concerned about that. It's going to take time and energy. It's going to take people putting their heads together and bringing in the community. Like, that's the whole thing, is that why do we even have schools and education? It's not to just send them away from our county. We want to keep, you know, a lot of our students here after they graduate, and we've got to build, have a bridge between the school and the community and come together and figure out, "Okay, how can we make this possible?" There is nothing impossible, but you've got to make sure that you're going to put in that time and that energy to see, "Okay, what can we do? How can we figure this out? What solution is there to make sure that those kids on that west side never feel less important?" You know, and yes, this is a District One seat, but they're all our kids. It's not just District One kids that I'm here for. I am here for every single student in making sure that they have, you know, what they need. And it could be, maybe, let's say that Hilliard Middle Senior has something that West Nassau doesn't have. Okay, so how can we collaborate with those two schools to maybe form something to where they can participate in what one school is offering, but yet one is not? There's always a solution. You just have to have the, put in that time and that energy to find it. I'm willing to do that.
Thank you.
There's certainly a disparity between the east and west side. I was born and raised here in Fernandina, and I still remember my first year of high school. We were bussed from Fernandina Beach High School to Hilliard Middle Senior. And I don't know, I'm one of these people that I just, I look at things a little differently. I left old Volvos and old mom-and-dad station wagons in the parking lot of Fernandina Beach High School with surfboards on the top. We drive less than 30 minutes, and there's dirt bikes and four-wheelers and three-wheelers, you know, out where the bicycle rack is, and, you know, I'm interested in that kind of stuff. I thought, "Gosh, our county is so wide and diverse. It truly is." And, you know, were there, were there intermingling of those schools, mostly during athletic events? Football and basketball games, you would see the different schools that, you know, participating at the different campuses. But what I'm finding now as a school board member is we're a lot smaller than what we were, you know, even 25 years ago. I meet with a lot of families on a routine basis. That will say, to Shannon's point about the Bean Center. Jamie, we live in Hilliard, but, you know, our daughter really wants to take X, Y, and Z. What would be an opportunity of getting to, say, Uly High School versus Hilliard? Well, I think our district does a wonderful job at that. It takes effort, and it takes that notification, it takes that desire, it takes that initiation to say, "We've got a little issue. How do we bridge that?" We are different. We are all Nassau, but we are different. Every school's minded a little differently. I had a family that I met with recently that just moved here to the island, but they came from a very small rural part of Florida, and they want their son to take part in our agricultural program, so we've started that, and we have a fabulous ag program in Hilliard. So working with those individual families, understanding their needs, understanding their wants, understanding what's best for that student, and we are certainly ready, willing, and able to stand up for that.
Please.
So going into, and I totally agree with you, Jamie, but here's the thing, is that over at the Career Center, we've had to stop. We had to stop one or two programs because the person who was teaching it left. So it's going to go right back to the staff. We have to do something because when we're wanting to offer these programs, if we can't actually get someone to come and teach it...
Well, first, I'm going to give you my 20 bucks for a great transition to our next topic, and, but that also puts you on the hot seat first. So you both, you both mentioned staffing and workforce, both attracting new teachers and staff into the community and retaining our existing talent. So how do we do it? And as also within, you know, our discussion, be thinking, because I know they're thinking it, I'm thinking it, the folks watching are thinking it, as a school board member, what's your role in that? So you put yourself on the hot seat.
That's okay. I don't mind. As an educator, you stay in the hot seat. So one of the things, and this is just my opinion, I know a lot of people are always saying, especially lately, "Pay." Yes, pay is an issue, absolutely. Hello, educator. You don't see me driving some, you know, spanking new car. But we have not really had high pay for our teachers for years in this county, but yet this year and last year, especially this year, we have seen an influx of our staff leave. So I am a data person. I love to look at numbers. That's the educator in me. So when I am looking at our data and I'm thinking, "Wait, hold on. Pay has been an issue for a long, long time, but now all of a sudden, we have an influx of teachers exiting and staff exiting. Something else has got to be driving this." So when someone leaves, there is an exit interview. One of the main things I feel like we need to do is we need to gather this data. Well, first, let's look at what the exit interview consists of, who is giving the exit interview, and maybe revamp the exit interview. Questions if we're not getting the data that we're really looking for of exactly what is making them leave this county. Because until you really know what the problem is of why people are leaving, you really can't solve the problem. But I think we've got to be creative, but we first, we need to know, like, why are people, why do they choose to leave? And I think pay is one of the issues, but I don't think it was, it's the entire picture.
Okay. I'll let, let's, Jamie, why don't you respond to that first in terms of your thoughts as to maybe why teachers are leaving first? And then we'll both, and you just transition right into it, and Shannon can be thinking about it, what are ways that we can think outside the box to keep folks and bring folks in?
Well, teacher recruitment, identifying good, high-quality teachers, then recruiting them, then retaining them, has been a huge challenge for all the districts here in the state of Florida, but I'm only concerned with one district, and that's ours. And to Shannon's point, we have, we have struggled with, with exactly that. You know, Sean, I don't know if it's a combination of less people getting into the profession, and I can speak a little to that. When I went through minimum standards for fire school, it was a five-year wait to become a fireman, and it didn't matter who your father was. And it didn't matter who your father was, it didn't matter where you were born and raised, it just took a long time to, to get on the job. And now, if you thought about being a fireman, or you whispered it to somebody, they're going to throw a cast net around you, make sure you get in school and get credentialed so we can put you on the street tomorrow. I think the same thing's happened, happening with our profession in teaching. Teaching is an awful hard profession. It is. And Shannon, you've been in the classroom for a lot of years, and I haven't. I spend a lot of time in classrooms, but I'm not the lead instructor, I'm not actually given instruction. But teaching is tough, and if someone's going to go and get into thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in debt to get master's degrees and doctorates, you know, they expect to be compensated for that. And I agree wholeheartedly with them. My father tells me all the time, it's never a problem if money will fix it. I think money will certainly help get us in the right direction. Nobody likes taxes. Nobody likes paying taxes. That's an awful three-lettered word. Nobody wants to do anything when you start talking about a tax. But we have a $224 million budget here in our district with 80-plus percent allocated to salaries. There's not a small business here that could operate like that with any consistency, and we continue to do it year in and year out, and it's still not enough. So I think two things. I think getting teachers pay and support staff pay up to where it needs to be, becoming more competitive in the workforce, becoming more competitive to our neighbors to the north and Duval County would be a huge step in the right direction. We continue to offer recruitment fairs, both virtually, in-person. We're advertising places that we've never advertised before. One principal just shared with me recently that they're actually looking at their paraprofessionals and their substitutes to say, Sean, do you have a degree in teaching because you're really good at it? And if you do, we start those conversations to see if we can recruit you to transition from a substitute or a paraprofessional into a full-time teaching position. So to Shannon's point, thinking very creatively, and it's ever-moving. It's not a static issue, and I don't think it's going to have a quick fix, whether we threw lots of money at it or not. I think it's going to be an ongoing challenge that's going to have to be addressed on an ongoing basis.
And we actually have a program to where your power professionals can transition in to becoming teachers, and we've had several. I'm sure everyone has seen The Adopt a Teacher. And I read through so many of them because I like just to see who's, you know, who's coming and, you know, who is staying. And sometimes, yes, I'll go on those Amazon lists and, you know, just send some things their way. But we've had several. I mean, I was actually pleasantly surprised with the number of power professionals who have transitioned this upcoming year into a teacher. And that warms my heart because they know, one, they know the model for Nassau County instructionally, and they know what they're getting into. But I was reading an article the other day, and it was this principal, and how he's not having a problem with getting teachers. And I'm like, okay, this is interesting. And the reason why is because he was getting his students, those seniors, he was actually having them, the ones that were 18, to go in and volunteer into the classrooms. And then he started actually partnering with the elementary and the primary school in the county, and they were going in and they were volunteering within the classrooms. And he told them, he would always tell those students, he'd say, now, listen, if you want to come back, we'll find somewhere for you to be. And that just kind of triggered something, and I thought, you know what? We have all of our, we have teachers right there within the classrooms of our own students. But we have to make that connection with those students and let them see that it's worth it. You know, education, it is not for the weak. You become Mother Teresa, pretty much, because, you know, they always say, if you go into education, you don't go in there for the pay. Well, you're right. You really don't. It is a passionate career. Not saying that we shouldn't be paying, but if we could introduce the students that we already have within our schools to the educational field and partner more so with FSCJ, I just feel like we have our educators right here within the county. It's just going to be about making those connections and letting them see what a rewarding career it is.
Do we, do we offer, or would it be something that you think would be a positive thing? We talked about it last week with our county commission candidates for any businesses in incentive packages for teachers, whether it's, you've been here five years, we'll do this for you, we'll pay some student loans off. Do we have those programs now, or do you, or do you think it would be effective to introduce those?
Well, I know that there is the government forgiveness loan for educators. You have to go through a lot of the paperwork. A lot of our schools here are Title I schools, so you have to teach for so many years in a Title I school, and you have to get approved, and then they might forgive a part of your student loan debt, but you could actually get all of your student loan debt taken care of. But absolutely, I know that our school system already partners with GPA, and the educators and staff, they can go and take classes three times a week. And teachers, though, have said to me, oh, well, that's great if you live on the island or in Uly, but we're out in Hilliard. Why do we want to drive all the way? And gas is so expensive to Uly to work out, and it's, you know, it's really not beneficial for them. So I do feel like, and the chamber could help with these connections, of, you know, coming together, creating some packages, absolutely. Because we, the educators, we're providing the workforce for the future. So it's a win-win situation for both parties.
Yes. The bottom end of that question is absolutely. And I agree everything with, with Ms. Hogue, was just discussing. We have wonderful partnerships now in place. We have local business leaders, small businesses that are heavily invested in our schools. And it takes a village to have a school system as successful as ours. And if a small business wanted to partner with us, I am positive we would welcome them with open arms.
And with that, one last one, because I know we could spend two hours just on this topic alone. How can we better leverage our existing workforce, the talent that we have in the community, whether they're, they're active in the workforce or retirees, to get them to help the teachers in the classroom? You guys both mentioned about preparing students for the real world. What are some better ways that, that we can tap our community for those resources? And I'll start with Jamie first this one.
You know, invest in people, and our district does a really good job at that. There's lots of room for improvement, but invest in people, making those opportunities available. There's a lot of retirees here that I run into on just about a daily basis that will say, how can I get involved at the school district level? How can I get involved, not really from a mentoring standpoint, not really from a substitute teacher standpoint, but how do I get involved? So I think making those opportunities available to our retirees here, or just those that have spare time and have a gift to share. We do, again, we do a great job at that now, but we could certainly do a better job at that of making those opportunities known so those individuals can be a part of all the greatness we have going on at our school district.
Every time that, you know, we're asked a question, half of me is thinking about our children here on the island and in Uly, and that other half of me is thinking about those kids over in Callahan, Hilliard, and Bryceville. And so our kids on this side, they are going to have more opportunities with partnering of businesses. So if you know, and we do know that we would have more, more businesses, because we do have more businesses just located here, we've got to make sure that we're balancing it. We can't put a lot of our effort just on this side of the county. So it's going to take us to look at what businesses are on the west side, and like, through this whole campaign, my eyes have been opened as to how things are different on the different sides of the county. And go back to Jamie, it's all about relationships. Everything, it's about that human connection. And so it's the time, it's the energy to go out and to walk into these businesses, meet people. I feel like we are, we are so blessed with the resources that we have in our county. It's going to be, though, connecting with them and letting them see how important they are in our community, but what a difference they could make if they would, you know, partner with us and go into the schools and, you know, teach a financial class to middle school one day, or come in and just tell about their job, and let them see how they have a plumbing company and they don't have all the student loan debt, and letting them know, you know, how they could go into that role. It's just partnering and connecting.
Thank you. All right.
Transitioning to the other big topic you guys both discussed, and then we'll, we'll start to wrap up. Growth management, infrastructure. We know that this county is growing as selling real estate. I'm happy about that. But how do we manage and prepare for the influx of folks? And Jamie, I'll start with you on that one.
Growth is a biggie. I'll say again, Sean, it's, it's probably our biggest challenge that we have in our school district. We have worked tirelessly since I've been on the board to manage growth, keeping our education high with our classroom sizes small. You hear that often, but the preaching is truly what we do, and we implement it, and we've been really successful at that. But my good friend, the county manager, Taco Pope, mentioned that a joint meeting recently that we have 4.5 new people moving into this county every day. That's new cars on the road, that's new people that you're standing behind at Harris Teeters and Winn-Dixie and Publix, and our school system is facing the exact same challenges. We started a land growth development committee, which has been hugely beneficial for, I think for everybody in our school district, not just school board members. This group of individuals have gone out, they have looked at those areas of high growth, they've looked at the schools in those areas, what those needs are, and how we can address those. Building a new school is expensive. To build a, to build an elementary school, you're something along the order of $50 million to build a new middle school. If there are adjacent properties that we can purchase, which we've done in the past, using the existing infrastructure, just adding on to that school site is, is certainly an option to look at and one that we look at really hard. We're spending tax dollars, and we are scrutinized, as you very well know, everything from auditors to the taxpayers and the general public, and we should be. Identifying new areas to build schools. In 2018, we partnered with the Board of County Commissioners. We started a mitigation agreement with all of our developers. Making sure that if a developer comes in and builds a new development, that they are paying their fair share back to the local school district, so those funds are available to add on to those existing schools or build new school sites. We've also taken a bold venture in, partnering again with the Board of County Commissioners, to look at property that they own and property that we own, that we can do land swaps, and we've been very successful at that multiple times now. Properties that weren't valuable to us were very popular to them, and properties that they had been sitting on were very much needed for the school district, so we've done land swaps together, and we've partnered on other ventures, like the new road going in between Moner and William Burgess, that's coming by our high school in Uly. So management is a daily event. It's not static, it's ever-moving, ever-changing, and if you attend Board of County Commission meetings, which I'm sure you do, if you stay on top of that stuff, we have been discovered. We've got new developers coming in every day, and, I mean, it's Shangri-La here. But with that, we've got to manage what we have, making sure that we keep intact our rich history, and making sure we don't lose that small community feel.
Well, when I came here 11 years ago, it felt much smaller than it is today. Yes, growth is happening, and it's happening at lightning speed. I feel like we, we can't wait, though. We have to constantly be planning and thinking ahead. So if we have all of these neighborhoods being built, and this is just me, like, thinking out of the box, why not say, okay, well, if you're going to be building this, you have to set aside some of the homes and maybe make it duplexes for teachers? We're building, but who's going to teach the kids? You have all these neighborhoods. Where are you going to put the kids? Look out at Wildlight. I drove out there, and I was shocked. I could not believe the amount of land that had been just plowed through and the single-family homes that are being built. And I look out at the classrooms, and we have the portables, and I'm talking to teachers out at Wildlight, and I'm like, do y'all even have the space for these kids? Nope, we're going to be stacked to get in the classrooms, trying to find the teachers to teach them. So it's, partnering with the county, can we maybe put a pause on how much development is taking place? I know a lot of people say, well, I don't have kids in the schools. It doesn't really make a difference to me. Are you a property owner? Because why are people coming here? It's a great place to live. We're an A-rated district. But we can only hold on to that A-rating for so long if we do not have the staff to teach them.
May I do just a follow-up? But I just want to touch on what Shannon was saying. This comes up an awful lot. You know, you hear about four and a half new people moving here each and every day. Jamie, why aren't you building schools on a routine and continuous basis? And so there's a process for that, if you know or don't know. You have to make application to the Department of Education. That's a rather lengthy process. To say that they move slow is an understatement, but at least they're moving. Oftentimes, not in the right direction, or in our direction, but you put that, that request in to build a new school, and Wildlight in particular, Wildlight took almost six years to build, and from inception, from talking about a neighborhood school, talking about the property, which is now Wildlight, behind Ranier's headquarters, to actually putting the key in the front door. I still remember that school opening up. I was so proud. I'd only been on the board just a couple of, a couple of years, and now we've got a brand-new school here in Nassau County. First day of school, I'm walking around back, and I notice my good friend that I graduated high school with, he works in facility maintenance, and they're pulling wires out of a tube. And I walk over, and we give the little man hug, and I said, what are you doing? He said, oh, we're stubbing out for portables. I said, gosh, y'all are being proactive. Yes, they'll be here in about three weeks. So day one, from opening up a brand-new school, we were already over capacity. So those, those are the challenges. Those are the, the rail, rubber-meet-the-road kind of challenges that we're dealing with here in Nassau County. So, brand-new school, flagship of our county, and we're already stubbing out for portable classrooms. So it's a, it's a challenge that we are going to face for years to come here.
Got it. Okay. I'm going to go ahead, there's lots of topics we could talk about, and I'll touch on a few in just a second, but go ahead, and we'll start with Ms. Shannon. Go ahead and give us a one-minute kind of summation of, of your candidacy and where we can find more information.
I'm the voice of the students, and sometimes that is not going to make some people happy. But the kids, they're the reason why we're even sitting in this room today. Mom, three daughters, they've all gone through. Mom, three daughters, they've all gone through the system. My youngest is going to be a senior at FBHS. I'm a business owner with Ms. Shannon's summer camps. I'm a citizen and I am here to do what is best for our students. I want to be the champion for them and give them the education that they deserve. You can, um, find more information about me on Facebook at Shannon Hoag, District One School Board Candidate. The website is actually in the works. It'll be up this weekend. And, um, you can also email me at hoagforschools@gmail.com.
Well, Sean, thank you again to you and Alex and Regina and Meredith for filming today. This is, uh, this has been a really nice discussion and, um, thank you to the audience for taking time out of your busy morning to come out. I've been on the school board for the last two terms. I've served a total of eight years on our Nassau County School Board. And it has been beyond a privilege to work with some of the hardest-working men and women that you will ever meet. They come to work every day as teachers. They come to work every day as paraprofessionals, bus drivers, custodians, uh, maintenance workers, cafeteria workers, and they give 150% to our school district day in and day out. I'm a huge supporter of our teachers, our support staff, and I want us to be the standard that all other districts are measured by here in the state of Florida. I like Shannon's thoughts that we shouldn't just think statewide, we should think nationally. So maybe I should change my, my pitch to that. If you like the fact that you've got a born and raised local here in Nassau County on your local school board, I ask for your vote and your support. If you like the fact that we're an A-rated district, number two in the state, I ask for your vote and your support. If you like the fact that we have safe schools and someone that is passionate about a safe environment for our students and our teachers, then I ask for your vote and your support. My name's Jamie DeOnis. You can learn more about me and my campaign by going to votejamiedeonis.com. And I thank you very much for this time today.
Thank you, Jamie. And thank you guys as well. Please reach out to them. I know there's lots of topics that we haven't, uh, had time to discuss. And if you wish to learn more about Rick Pavilock, his website is pavilockfor, F-O-R, NassauSchools.com. Remember, early voting starts August 10th to August 20th. Our primary election day is August 23rd. And this Thursday, we'll have our District Three School Board candidates, David Dew, Curtis Gaffs, and Albert Wagner. And once again, I'd like to thank Meredith Lucas with Visual Impact for recording this so that everybody can see it. Have a wonderful day.